All right, we'll call this meeting to order. The meeting of December 20th, 2022, the Lather Village Planning Commission. Madam Clerk, we can get a roll call, please?
Chair Hammond.
Present.
Vice Chair Stansberry.
Here.
Secretary Fobbs.
Here.
Commissioner Disick. Commissioner Cantor.
Here.
Commissioner Powell.
Here.
Commissioner Tamorelli.
Present.
Mr. Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. I have a motion to excuse Commissioner Disick.
Yeah, I make a motion to excuse Mark Disick.
Second.
So moved and seconded. All in favor, raise your hand or say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. It's not on our agenda, but we will do the Pledge of Allegiance. So those in the audience, please stand. The Pledge of Allegiance, the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'll now move on to the approval of the agenda. Do you have any modifications to the agenda or a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
So moved and seconded, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda is approved. We will now move on to the approval of the meeting minutes from the Planning Commission meeting of October 18th, 2022. If anybody has any adjustments to the meeting minutes or a motion to approve the meeting minutes as written, be entertained.
Make a motion to approve the meeting minutes.
Second.
So moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting minutes from October 18th, 2022, the Planning Commission meeting have been approved. I will now move on to public comment. Doesn't appear to be anybody in our physical audience. Do we have anybody on Zoom?
It is narytori.
Okay, well, since there are no publics here to make public comments, we will close out the public comment session and move on to old business and tabled items, of which there are none.
I try to keep this really easy.
Perfect. So we'll move on from old business and tabled items to our new business. We'll start off with item A, which is the zoning text amendments regarding dumpsters and rubbish management.
Good afternoon, good evening. My name is Eric Peach with Giffords Webster, Village Planning Consultant, City Planning Consultant. As you may recall, in past meetings, we had discussion of a proposed special land use, use that was moving in or proposing to move into some tenant space in an existing commercial lease space. And part of the review was to address waste removal for a site like that, commercial site. And there was some discussion about what the requirements of the ordinance were/was and how to apply it. And so then we looked at the language in the ordinance to determine if there was some clarification that was needed. And after going through the section of the ordinance, section 5.3, it was determined that there could be some clarification. And so that's what's before you today. If you had a chance to read the memo, it was that particular case a few months ago that spurred the conversation. And what seemed like may have been a daunting task to look at the language in the ordinance because it was quite confusing as to how to handle something like that, actually was quite simple and straightforward. I believe that if you have a color copy of the proposed amendments, the changes are in red. And so, again, those are very minor, and hopefully that just helps to clarify what would be expected of an applicant who is either proposing a new establishment or occupying an existing establishment. Essentially, in a nutshell, dumpsters and commercial property would be optional. One of the requirements within 5.3 was also to provide a room interior that's fire-protected for storage of waste and rubbish, which that is proposed to be optional as well. So instead of it being a requirement, it would make more sense that that's an option, which would seem more appropriate for new buildings, new facilities constructed. But for all intents and purposes, you know, a small tenant space, leasing, a vacant space, would be required to provide rubbish enclosures, which, you know, could be stored outside as long as they're screened. And I think that the gist of the conversation was to just how to handle those types of things in an appropriate manner so that they're, you know, outside but screened from view and able to be, to handle the rubbish in an appropriate way. And if ever it was determined for the site to have a trash disposal problem, that ultimately the option to provide dumpster enclosure would be something that the property owner would have to comply with or contract with an outside service for trash pickup. So that's the basis of the ordinance amendment, open for discussion, happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, my only thing was, and I think it's addressed, but I just want to bring it up, that, you know, obviously, commercial businesses can have dumpsters. They obviously have the option to do indoor storage, but it's got to be fire-protected. So if we're allowing containers similar to ones residents would use to be stored outside of buildings, then like, do they need to be shielded? Or is it just enough to have it be like outside of the view of neighbors? And, you know, if you're in an alleyway and your neighbor is a wall with the residents behind you, is that, just having it in the back of your building, is that out of the way enough? And I'm not sure how I feel about it. I feel like, I mean, I can see my neighbor's garbage cans at their house. It doesn't bother me. So I'm just curious how other planning commissioners feel about it. Is it sufficient to just have like outdoor storage in approved containers in a way that's not disruptive to the building of the residents or neighbors or other business neighbors of that business?
Yeah, I guess, you know, the difference is the garbage cans in this case are out there 24/7, whereas the ones in your neighbors are only out there the day of garbage. Are you talking about when they pull back and they put them on the side of the house?
Yeah, yeah, some people do that, right? As long as they're not in view from the street.
Yep.
General code enforcement isn't going to cite them for storing those containers. Like, so they're outside and I can see them. I imagine that at businesses like the business we discussed in our last Planning Commission meeting, that kind of brought this whole issue up, that's probably the case for them too, that they have an approved container. And when they're not, when they're, when it's not garbage day, it's just sitting in the back wall of the building outside. And the ordinance seems to allow for that, especially with this modified language that makes it so that it's not required that there be a fire-resistant indoor storage space. I guess the question is, is that acceptable to the planning commissioners?
Yes.
I'm okay with it.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, these, yep. Of course. I was just gonna say, is it, let me pull this down. With a trash can, would it make any sense to elevate it? You know, keep it off the ground? I don't know, part of me says it should be walled off like any other container, not necessarily six feet high, but is this as a foot higher than a refuse container? I don't know, take it to the worst one, some guy has 15 garbage cans. I don't know.
It's a good point. If you have one refuse container, that's one thing.
Yeah, one refuse container, eh. But if you've got six or seven and they're overflowing, you know, I know there's some general things, but a lot of communities I've seen, you have to have them elevated off the ground, you know, a foot. We have to have logs and firewood elevated a foot off the ground. I don't know.
I think logs and firewood for me are different.
I mean, it's a different thing, of course, but in terms of rodents and I guess they can probably climb up the walls of any garbage can anyway.
Yeah, if you raise a garbage can off the ground, if, or leave it on the ground.
Is there any distinction for a food-producing business versus a general business, you know, something that would mostly have paper waste? Have you seen anything like that? Is there a requirement that we want to be a little more stringent?
I don't think in the zoning code.
Not in the zoning code. I know, I mean, obviously for restaurants, I mean, they're going to have those, you know, the grease dumpster and they usually...
I mean, are they required to have a dumpster though?
There's no requirement that they have dumpsters. There's no additional requirements beyond what Susie said about the grease traps being in, there's a whole section on grease traps and grease collection and grease mitigation, keeping it out of our sewer system. But there is, under the general ordinance, there are no limitations or restrictions specific to the type of business. And just to your point about, if there are 15, I think that would be an unlikely scenario because that's likely a use or a property that would require a dumpster, just based on the amount of trash that's produced. I think clearly that would fit. But it's probably not a bad idea to spell that out because currently there are, in neither the zoning nor general ordinance, are there any limitation on the number of trash containers that one property can have? Right, and that's something we talked about in council when this was brought up to council. The two, the two things that I didn't see that were addressed in there, one, there was the question if somebody has more than one can, more garbage than one can can handle, do we require them to have a dumpster? And then the other question was whether or not we require them to have the larger 96-gallon cans, you know, the hard, the hard container, the bigger ones.
That are required to be purchased from Trangali based on what's, what the general ordinance says?
Right, well, I actually, I don't think...
I'm still not at today's...
Yeah, it does say Trangali or...
Or another vendor.
Whoever the current provider is.
But you can't buy one yourself, it's got to come from them.
Yeah.
And there is garbage pickup for all the businesses, right? Unless they have a dumpster, which they then have to arrange.
Correct. So I think one easy way to deal with like the number of cans is to kind of figure out like what's the smallest size dumpster that you could order from a rubbish management company, a waste management company? And, you know, if you reach that number of, that total number of gallons with the number of can.
There's something in here, I thought I read something in here that talked about the minimum, when a dumpster was required.
The minimum cubic feet of indoor waste?
Yeah. What's that?
225.
Two...
225 cubic feet.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I saw that somewhere.
It's on the last page.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, there it is, yep.
Number three.
What happens if you can't get a dumpster to fit in that alleyway though?
If you can't acquire a dumpster that will, because the alleyway's narrow?
If you have enough independent cans that hit the volume, but you can't put a dumpster in because of all the screening, you're going to run back to the same problem we started with.
Yeah, but I'm thinking to Les' point, next door, you know, they're, they have individual, no, it's mostly vacant, but they do have individual cans. Their actual property is not even park, really parkable behind their building, so they would never be able to, they'd never be able to put an actual dumpster enclosure there. They would have to...
The correct, the correct way.
Yes, the correct way.
Right.
Per our, per the standards, right?
Per the standard.
So in that case, I mean, do you really, you know, I mean, I don't, individual cans would be the way to go? I mean, would you want to look at maybe only one, you know, one can per unit? If it was a multi-tenant space?
I mean, I've got neighbors that have more than one can. It's their residential property and there's only, there's way fewer people using that property than would be most business.
Right.
So I don't know that limiting is the way to go. The language in the proposed ordinance, or it's actually already in the current ordinance, about 220 cubic feet only applies to indoors storage. So what I'm getting, what I was getting at is, so if you're using 96-gallon containers, how many 96-gallon containers do you need to have before you like essentially are a dumpster, right? And that's kind of the, the number I was kind of thinking about in my head, but did not do the math before the meeting.
Do our vendors have some type of upward limit? If I have 10 cans, are they going to say at some point? Or, so then, I guess my question is, what, does it matter?
Because of the storage of those cans?
The view.
When it's not...
If they're able to still comply with it being out of public view?
Right, but it doesn't, but it doesn't say it has to be out of, it just has to be inconspicuous.
Inconspicuous.
Out of public view though, in the beginning.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So as long as they're able to comply with out of public view?
Then it should be good, even if you have 20 cans.
You got 20 cans!
Yeah, okay.
All right, that's fine.
Okay.
And what about the requirement for the, you know, the 96-gallon, you know, the big can? That's approximately 21 cans, Jason.
Thank you.
Took some conversion here, thank you Google.
So, yeah, you gotta get the 20 cans anyway before you really like are a dumpster.
The minimum size dumpsters generally are 10-yard dumpsters that we see, and that's roughly 2,000 gallons.
Yeah, so 20 cans.
That's a lot of cans.
Yeah, okay. Great, thanks for that, Scott.
That's why you pay me the big bucks.
So, but requiring 96-gallon containers as opposed to, what is it, 32-gallon containers or whatever?
The 35 ones.
Good question, how do people feel about that? Do we make, do we make the assumption that all businesses have the potential to generate enough waste to actually need a 96-gallon container?
I think that organically, if you have that many smaller cans and to keep it in public view, you're going to have to upgrade anyway to, again, be in compliance. And so I think that it's already baked in by just that one little magic word, public view, they're going to have to talk to the vendor.
Yeah. Yeah.
If I have 19 cans and they, you know, I can see exactly...
19, 35-gallon containers or...
Or 15 or whatever the number, yeah.
Or 10, 90-gallon containers, it's kind of the same deal. I agree. Any other discussion about this? Okay, do we have a motion on this proposed language?
I'll make a motion to approve the waste and rubbish zoning amendment as written in our packet.
It would actually be a motion to schedule a public hearing.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so I'll make a motion to schedule a public hearing on the waste and rubbish zoning amendment as written in the today's packet.
Move it to second?
Second.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
All right, awesome.
Get that on the agenda for a public hearing.
Our goal is to get it on for January.
For January, perfect. Okay, next order of new business is item B, which is the 2023 Planning Commission calendar of meetings. When are we going to meet next year?
We are going to keep meeting at the same, same time, same bat channel, third Tuesday of every month, 7:00 PM, right here. Included is the, is this scheduled, there are no...
No holiday conflicts.
No holidays, no conflicts. You know, certainly adjust as may seem fit. Maybe you want to do a December holiday, I don't know, just throwing it out there, that's crazy, I know, I wish we'll think of something. But this is what we have before you. I don't think that we're going to be doing Zoom anymore in the new year, keeping Facebook live, but that's still kind of a point of discussion, just want to throw it out there for your information, but this is the calendar.
Great, okay.
Make a motion to adopt the 2023 Planning Commission calendar.
Second.
So moved and seconded, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Susie, do you know if there's a plan to have another joint meeting in '23?
Yes, there will be. That was definitely something that, well, by the way, said last year.
Breaks that way to other matters for discussion, so we're onto that agenda, thank you.
Yes, we're on that, yeah.
I didn't know if that date was going to conflict, that's all.
That will be, I'll have to do some chatting with the city administrator to see, I mean, I'd like to see us have at least two, really, to have a solid working meeting for, you know, whatever we need to discuss. So I'll need to talk with Sue, see when she would like to try and target that, and then we'll send out our favorite doodle polls to really narrow down that date. So, I'll add that, and then, okay. And then, if you don't mind, Les, you brought up the, where are we at with all of our projects? I am not 100% satisfied with this list that was on the desk. There's some things like, ignore the amount billed. I know we had some issues when we were first getting that set up, so I don't want anybody to look at that. And I don't think this necessarily captures all of the detail that you were necessarily looking for, but this is every project that has come through. It's, so PZ and E is planning, zoning, engineering, arts enforcement.
Engineering.
Engineering. So every, this is a relatively new module through our VSNA software, which is what we use to pretty much manage everything. So this is every project that we've seen probably over the last two years, three years, really, because we started in 2020. You know, some of these, like the Sernow ones, like those are the properties down the way. Leifield Investments, Leifield Partners, don't know why there's not the third one on there. Those are the three buildings, the two up there and one down here. Nothing's happened, and I, I started to go through and try and kind of backfill some of this information, but clearly that didn't happen, sorry, gentleman and lady. So that, like, for example, I mean, you can see that one was started in 2020 though. It's expired. Their plan is, they're going to have to come back before you. Our friend, you know, we've got our friend Ramil, who's across, across the way. Do you have things done? He's still working on it.
Is that the MRI?
Yes.
Building?
Yeah.
He's done.
He's done. So we've got Discount Tire is the Hale Properties, and I am, I can actually tell you today, I went over there, checked it all out, they are good. We've got Happy Neighbors, and who will be even happier once they're able to get that dumpster moved into their beautiful dumpster enclosure and move that mini, that mini storage thing. So, but they're basically done. We had, we've got, Jefferson Wiggins is our, that was the physical therapy place closer towards Lincoln. He is, he's, as you can see, he's been finished since June of last year, he's been open. These include our generator requests, some other, obviously the ZBA. Panera, I had a question about Panera today, they haven't received their approvals, billing at Panera, so we're just waiting for their demolition clearances. So that's outside of our hands, right? We're waiting for DT consumers on that. But as soon as they have those, we can move forward fairly quickly on a demo permit. The gas station is LB Petro, they will be going back before, they'll, they'll actually be coming back to you. I had misremembered how that all was supposed to work out, so they will be coming back. We talked to him, was that last week? Yeah, we met with him onsite last week. He is very, very close to being finished, but said he'll be back at Planning Commission and then going to ZBA for, or ask for his signage, so stay tuned. But so that's, I mean, I went through that super quickly, but...
So feedback I have is, yeah, the amount billed doesn't need to be on there, but there probably does need to be a column for comments that then you could add in a comments column, like what, some verbiage about what the, a little bit of high-level detail about the status of the, of the project. Something like, and I, like, the Panera bread one really should fall off of this report, right, because it's completed, but we actually, there's more work to be done, so we want to keep an eye on it.
Right.
So even if it's not in a process step that we're related to, like demolition, it'd be nice to keep those things on there for bigger projects at least.
Sure.
Until they're completed and then they can come off the report, right? And I'd like to see it in the packet.
Sure.
That's my feedback. It's great, thank you for doing this.
Yeah, sure.
So Jason, are you thinking maybe a rolling two years or three years that would incorporate the different size projects? Or they would be, they'd have to come before us again anyway?
Well, I think anything that would need to come back before us, like the, the four items that are on here that don't have a started date, like those are expired, right?
The Sernow one is, I think that one's finished. That should be down there. So all of those are part of that, Leifield, those are, yes, those are all expired, so they, they will have to come back before you.
So my feeling is like, all the things that's, all the stuff that's on here that's completed, other than the Panera project, should fall off of this report next month because why would we keep an eye on it? It's done, unless it's...
What are you defining as completed?
That there is no additional work being done. Like the, the, the business is open.
Business is open, they're all up and done.
They're up and running.
Okay.
Yeah. So, and it's, you know, there's certain circumstantial things, right? Like, again, the Panera one, I think is a good example. Like, we don't have any oversight over next steps, but at least in terms of like the demolition, once they're...
But the project's not done.
The project isn't completed, so it should stay on there and we should be keeping an eye on it.
It'll stay on there until there's a brand-new building and it's grand opening?
Yeah, and it's gone through all of its reviews and approvals, so we make sure that they built something that was in compliance with the site plan we approved.
So then, completed actually has a different definition than done.
Yeah.
And so maybe a column...
For project done.
Project done versus site plan review done or ZBA's done, whatever.
Yeah, because that's a good point, because that's, a completed column could be, is the current PZE process step completed?
Mm-hmm.
The answer is yes, but then there's the column for, is the project done? And the answer would be no in this case, so that might...
No, that would settle, like the Panera, it's got to stay on because the project's actually...
The project's not done. Does that make sense, Susie?
It can be just columns with like checkboxes.
That's what I'm saying.
Pretty much, yeah. If it's not checked, then we know where they're at in the process.
If you put a date on it, yeah, it doesn't really matter.
Well, I might end up even just doing this in Excel. This is an automated thing from the VSNA, right? Like, trust me, it's not, it is the least intuitive program, set of programs you...
Does it download to Excel? Can it download to Excel?
I'm sure there's a way. Like I said, it's the most, like, unintuitive, unintuitive, unintuitive program.
Least intuitive.
It's, it is not easy to use, how's that? But I will figure out a way and I'll tweak it. How often would you like to see, would you want, this is like a standing item on the agenda?
Standing item on the agenda.
Yes.
Yeah, even if there is no progress in any of the projects, then we'll know that, right? If we see, we can compare this meetings to last meetings and see that nothing has progressed, then that's good information to have too. Any other feedback for Susie? Under, I have a matter for discussion, and it was about training. So the last couple of meetings, we've talked about training, and the Giffords Webster team was going to come up with a plan on what they were going to train us on, and we were going to figure out which meetings we were going to do planning, training in.
We are planning in January.
January, you want to start?
We're going to do our, we're going to do like a planning, a planning refresher, right? We clearly have some new members, we could all use a little refresher, so we're going to do a planning refresher in January. And Eric and I have actually started to plan for, we're planning to plan for the Planning Commission. So we have, right, we're planning, don't we? Got it all? Right, so we're actually going to, we will have our plan for how we're going to plan for you, planning commissioners, for our next meeting. Right, so you'll have a, we'll hopefully have a better schedule for you moving forward for 2023.
Sure, yeah, that's great. If you guys come up with an idea about what that first session's going to be about, if you can let us know even ahead of when the agenda is published, that would be helpful.
Sure.
Just drop us a note, just so we have an idea about what topic we're going to be, should be focused on.
Well, January will definitely be focused on more of the broad overview.
Overview?
It's focusing more specifically on our things, right?
Yeah.
So we make sure that all of our planning commissioners have a good handle on where, you know, what and where, and the who's whats.
Okay, great, terrific. Susie, do you have any other matters for discussion?
Um, not quite, well, I have one little thing that I, it's not quite for... Not quite, well, I have one little thing that I, it's not quite for discussion, but it's for fun. And I don't know if I told you guys that, because I think we missed the leg, because I don't, did I tell you guys about the hawk signal? Did I tell you about this?
We knew it was approved, right, and there was gonna be a potentially one installed.
Yes, so we, I've met with, I've met with the engineer from Giffords, as well as representatives from the Road Commission and with HRC. And we have identified a location, pretty much right in front of DXL. That will, installing the mast, I think we're doing mast arms. HRC has started doing some preliminary design engineering services and so we're getting that ball rolling and I'm super excited. And I just wanted to make sure I shared that with you. We're looking at probably late 2023, early 2024 for an install, so.
Sure.
Stay tuned for more fun stuff.
Yeah, in case anybody who's watching the recording of this doesn't know what a hawk signal is, essentially a crosswalk with.
Yes.
Lights and, you know, indicates traffic to stop and provides a mechanism for pedestrians to cross from one, in this case, from one side of South River to the other.
Right, and it will not be, it will not be a standard signal, right? The Road Commission was not super keen on saying the big thumbs up to a fully signalized crossing there, but it will be, it's pedestrian activated, so when you hit the button and it starts flashing.
Lights flash.
Lights flash, the walk sign says walk and then you can cross. So otherwise it'll be, you know, not functioning.
Cool, that's good news. Thanks for that update.
Yep.
And Commissioners have any items for discussion?
Just one. We, two meetings ago passed on to council the impervious surface.
Yeah.
Recommendation, which council decided to, I don't know, was it tabled or?
They voted it down.
Voted it down. In retrospect, my personal feelings, we probably didn't do a good job selling it, preparing a package that went through the why, where, how, you know, those kind of questions. I think we had a nice document that was rather lengthy, that talked about lots of things, but council's busy and, you know, the documents they have to prepare for, the packets are hundreds of pages at times. My only comment is I think if we have another run at that or other similarly challenging ideas, we should take some time to come up with, I don't know, in my old days of PowerPoint, some sort of presentation that walks directly through why we've done what we, or why we're recommending what we recommend. Because I don't think we really did a good job on it.
They were very confused.
Yeah.
And, and, you know, to, what, what might be actually be a good idea, this could be a good item for the first group meeting, or the combined meeting, where we present to them why we thought that that was important and see if we can change some minds.
I mean, can it be, they've said no, does that mean we can't revisit it?
No, we could, we could send it back to them again. There, there are big concerns, I think, as Bruce indicated, with a lot of misunderstanding. They were concerned that we were eliminating circular driveways and telling, telling residents they couldn't. Pave their entire yards.
Yeah, no, I, I, I watched the meeting and.
The idea that telling residents what they can and can't do.
Right, I think the big, the, the big sticking point was, you know, I think was circular driveways, where if somebody needed to, you know, do a reconstruction of their driveway, they wouldn't be allowed to do that and they would have to go to a straight driveway. And there were a couple of people who were not under, you know, I don't wanna say not understanding, but they were agreeing with it or.
No, no, I know. I get it, and, I mean, I think we could have collectively.
Yeah.
Done a better job of selling the ideas.
I don't agree with that.
Don't agree with that.
I think we did a fine job. I just think they couldn't understand. And I don't think it's our fault that they couldn't understand. If they had issues, why didn't they just ask questions and send it back?
Yeah.
I think they had to take action.
But not my question, that's not my question. The question is that we're still dealing with people. If they didn't understand, they could table it and send it back.
They could table it, that's true.
As opposed to just making a decision, which acts like people who just simply didn't understand. And if you watch it, it seemed like they simply didn't understand, so since I don't understand, I'm not gonna do anything. And that doesn't seem like it's in the best interest of the city. So my question is still the same. If they didn't understand, where's the list of things that they didn't understand that they sent back? They didn't. So then, to me, they didn't do their job. That's what I'm, that's my point.
Yeah, good point.
Yeah, that might be.
But I think we did a fine job.
Well, I, I, I mean, I think we did a good job, but I think we could have done a better job of preparing something different to help them.
I'm not a big proponent to dumbing things down.
Yeah, I'm not saying dumb it down, I'm just saying highlight the.
When you, when you watch it, it looks like they needed it to be dumbed out, to me, that's all.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying.
Well, yeah, because I wanted to separate the, the presentation from the content.
Yeah.
Right? So, so was the issue with the presentation, which we could do in different formats, let's say, but if the content stayed the same, then, because to me, whenever there's a no, that means that you understand and you disagree. If you table, that means that you're looking for clarity and obviously a yes also means that you understand and you're in the affirmative. And so that, that's why I'm just trying to get clarity, A, what could we have changed, if anything? B, was there something that would have accelerated the, the co, the thinking behind the content? I don't know how much more we could have talked about it. We talked, like, we spent a long time really getting to the nitty gritty of that issue. Large scope, small scope, scoped it down, so it was very clear in our understanding. And to your point, maybe there's more dialogue, because I'm looking not just about this issue, I'm looking at all future forward issues. If there's a way to accelerate how our dialogue works and whether we're bullet pointing or we're being more succinct, anything that would accelerate that and not change the content, but accelerate that, I'm all for. But I don't, I actually think the content, to Les' point, was actually great.
I think that this was a, a special case in terms of challenging, challenging to understand. For all the reasons why it took us an hour and a half to talk through it, right?
And not just once either.
And had talked about it multiple times and all that kind of stuff.
But just, he just made the point, though. If you say no, you said you understood it. If you say you're tabling it, it gives you the ability to say you don't understand. So what you take from the public's perspective is, they fully understood everything we gave them and said no. But when you watch it, it looks like nobody understood anything, but didn't have the ability to say, I don't understand and I wanna table it. It just looked bad.
Yeah, and I would say there are two meetings, to your point, Susie, was, we were going really far out of scope. But once we actually got, you know, to get our minds around, but once we actually talked about it, the scope actually was pretty small.
It was very narrow.
It was very narrow.
It was very narrow.
On purpose, right?
Yes, so that you could understand.
And I'll say, I'll add to that, that this is probably the first time that I can recall where a zoning, a recommendation for an ordinance has not been approved by council. And I'll agree with all, all points. I do think some, some of the delivery and presenting it to them, there's areas for improvement with that. Explaining that Planning Commission has done the high level, the broad overview, the narrow, dialed in review. And this is, you know, just kind of maybe better explaining, council does get as part of their packet, all of the minutes from this meeting. They obviously have access to watch these meetings, not necessarily grouped together with that item, so maybe there was some disconnect there. If they didn't make those connections, we could, we could do that with future amendments, ordinance amendments. Put, put the dialogue, put the feedback from the Planning Commission in with that, that ordinance, so that they have that right there in front of them. And then, yeah, let them, remind them that it is okay, if they have questions, that they can table it and, and send back specific questions to this body or through the liaison, you know, direct questions that, that he can ask, so.
The other thing that's coming to my recollection is there was pushback on the number of properties sampled.
Yeah, it was part of the.
So there was some concern that, like, we didn't.
That was Eric's fault, though.
We were okay with it. As a Planning Commission, we understood it was a relatively small sample, but it was a very broad sample. Like, the smallest property and the largest property were very significantly different and, like, I felt we had a pretty good handle on it. But that message was clearly sent in the council meeting that if they were gonna consider this again, they would wanna have a bigger sample.
Yeah, well, again, I think, I think it was the difference in, in the intent, because the intent for us was to just get a sense and, and they were looking for a statistically significant, you know.
Well, but there, there was no backing to identify what a statistically significant number was. My recollection of the meeting was, how many did we have? 10 or 12?
14, I think it was.
14 properties. There was no one with a statistical background that was able to say, look, to have a confidence interval of this, we need to sample 47 properties. It was just, well, you know, we need more properties. And, and that was, I, I felt that was inappropriate as well. I mean, if you're gonna start talking about doing statistics, you better have some background to back up what you're saying about needing a higher statistical sample for a better confidence interval, which I, I don't think was necessarily appropriate.
Well, you know, one of the things I'm looking at is both bodies are actually looking at things probably a little slightly differently. And every city's different, but organically, we've got to figure out what their language is, right? How they're looking at it, how we're supposed to look at it. And we've got, when it goes up to council, I'm assuming that there's some type of happy medium, because it doesn't sound like maybe even the lack of understanding as much as no.
They did say no. I mean, I didn't think to your point, Wes, Les, about them saying no versus tabling. I did see, in my opinion during the meeting, they did seem confused. They weren't sure there were sort of two priorities going. They didn't understand how they could move forward at the same time. And you're right, they could have tabled it. I'm not, I don't recall why it wasn't suggested to table, but to have it just turned down. But at the same time, they definitely, to me, appeared to be confused, which is why I said I think we need to, we could have had additional materials that maybe could have provided a direct path to where we came to.
So, so if we actually would have, again, if I was, and I'm not, so, but if I was actually, you know, part of the commission body and I start to see, well, this actually does X for wastewater, this actually does, so I'm starting to see justifiable cause, because I've got away inconveniencing residents with what this actually does overall for, let's say, budget or for XYZ. Now I actually have a decision to make and I might want more clarity, but i- if you're not gathering that bridge of how those are connected, then, then you're not gonna get it. Because that's why we did it.
It was a pretty complicated issue and.
And hard to quantify, right?
I mean, there's the visual, the beautification side, there's the, the wastewater, you know, preventing it. I don't know.
Yeah, I think the focus was very heavy on the, on the driveways.
Yeah. And I, and maybe a joint session would be a good thing to do.
Yeah, so I guess my feeling is, there's no point in us taking the issue up again if it's just gonna get lowered down again, right?
Yeah.
Because the feeling amongst the council is not gonna change based on, we have more information or we've done a bigger sample or there's more data about the impact of what we're proposing. So maybe the idea, the appropriate thing to do is exactly what you just said, we bring it up at the joint meeting, whenever that happens, have an actual direct conversation with council about, well, would they be willing to actually consider?
Or what changes, or what changes do they want?
Or what changes do they want? The answer might be, they're not willing to consider it. They don't want any changes. They think everything's fine the way it's written currently in the ordinance and then, then we know that, then, like, let's not waste time on it.
Well, we're gonna check off the box either way. Oh, that one's.
Then we'll know.
Next box.
Then we'll know.
You have the ordinance today, so.
Yeah, that's a dilemma.
So let's just keep a ten in it for the joint meeting, whatever happens. Great, thanks, Beau. Any other matters for discussion? General communications?
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
Welcome, Alicia.
Thank you.
Your first in-person meeting.
That's right.
Congratulations.
So, so happy to have, I, I don't have everybody today, but so happy to have a full commission, yeah, so.
Yeah, we got a full commission, that's great. I think that's it. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, starting. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.